I call the meeting in order where everybody please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and are transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Seeing none, good evening everyone. Long time no see.
Good evening.
Yes.
It's nice to be home.
I think we made 24-hour mark.
Back in our home.
Seven days.
Right.
Three times in seven days, right?
I know. Well, it was nice to take it on the road last night.
Yes.
But, you know.
It was very good.
Yeah, it was.
It's good to get together with the town council and actually show, you know, the synergy between us.
Absolutely, and we look forward to continuing to work with them.
Yes.
I'm interested in us, you know, talking about the subcommittee and, you know, making some headway with that, so I will make sure that I'm in touch with the mayor and we will kick that off.
Start getting that ready.
Absolutely, yes.
That's agreed.
Yep.
Yes.
All right, but it was nice, and here we are, back again.
Yes.
All righty. Committee reports.
Well, I have my notes from the South End FSA meeting that I went to.
So you're going to read them. Go right ahead.
So I missed the last time, but one of the things that they talked about, which was great, was Battle of the Books that the 4th grade does. So that sounded amazing. They had that, and the kids loved it. The 100th Day School was February 12th. Let me see, Jackals Night, they've got set, and it's for everyone, not just South End. So it's South End, North End, and the middle school is June 22nd. So they will have some information going out about that, and it sounds like fun, but they have a lot of great stuff going on at South End.
Awesome.
Forgot it last time, remembered it tonight.
Very nice.
So I attended the high school play.
Yes.
And they did a great job.
They were fantastic.
Fantastic.
They really were.
It really was.
It was so great.
They did a great job.
They did a really good job.
It was there. They were just the top of the game, and it was a lot of fun. It really was a lot of fun to watch the show.
No, it was. It was great.
Yes, big congrats.
Yes, absolutely.
And you already mentioned our joint meetings, though.
Yes, and the finance meetings continue for the budget.
Yes, yes.
I believe we are scheduled to meet this week, Friday.
Yes, Friday.
And that process moves on.
Yes.
All right, so moving on the agenda. It's a short one this evening. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, can I have a motion, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 and B2?
So moved.
Second. B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of February 26, 2019, and B2 is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Ed pursuant to the code. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, under business, can I have a motion for B3 and B4?
So moved.
Second.
B3 is a motion to approve the student transportation services for the spring athletic season, and B4 is a motion to approve the 2018-19 student transportation services to and from school. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Nope. Roll call please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, from the Office of the Superintendent of Schools, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S5?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from February 26th. S2 is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedures as listed. S3 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S4 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence, and S5 is a motion to approve the following substitute teachers for the 18-19 school year. Any discussion?
No.
Nope. Roll call please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, under policies, can I have a motion for S6?
Oh, so moved. Sorry, yeah, just want to make sure, okay, yep.
Second.
S6 is a motion to approve the second reading of the following policy updates, revisions. The first one we heard last week.
Best week, right. That's, yes, thank you.
Any discussion?
No.
Roll call please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, under curriculum, can I have a motion for S7?
So moved. Second.
S7 is a motion to approve the following curriculum writing for the 18-19 school year at the rate listed. Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, the meeting is now open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. I believe we have a presentation this evening. Good evening.
Yes.
Rob Barilari, 36 Mountain View Drive in Cedar Grove.
Thomas Kovacs, 90 Overlook Road, Cedar Grove.
So we're here to discuss Wizard Sports Club and our partnership with the Board of Ed. Tommy is the club president, I am the vice president. Excuse me, one second.
Before Rob is starting his presentation, I want to thank Luanne, Mr. Featherman, Mr. Gagerty, who's been helping us a lot the past three years almost since we established in 2016 in the summer. So thank you so much, and I want to thank for the board members, board members, to having us here tonight and listen to us.
Like Tommy said, thank you very much for your time, taking time out of your busy schedules. We appreciate that. So just a brief introduction as to who we are and what the Wizard Sports Club is all about. So we want to talk a little bit about the Wizards, some of our community involvement, the growth of the club, and continued partnership with the Board of Ed. So those are some of the topics we'd like to discuss on. So a little bit about us. Our mission statement at the club is not just to foster athletes, but to foster good people through athletics. So we strive to teach the young athletes in our, in our club what it means to be a good person, to provide a challenging environment to maximize their potential as people, not just players. The two go hand in hand. Some of the things that we strongly believe in and that we try to support is respect for themselves, respect for their fellow players, respect for their coaches, respect for their families, their community. We teach the importance of communication, teamwork. We try to push them to reach their fullest potential at their rate through a positive reinforcement and tight group, as you can see here from just a small representation of the club that we have, that group environment and being around with one another. So we value those principles. We emulate those principles every day in our training and our, in our different activities that we do outside of the training, and we try to instill that in the young men and women that we have in our, in our group, in our club. We are set up with eight separate programs within our group. The youngest being the Junior Beginners Academy, basically five-year-old, six-year-old children just starting to get to learn and have the love of the game and sport competition, but it's in a very fun, friendly, relaxed environment, right up through where more advanced as they gain and become more into it and learn and age a bit, become more in tune with the athletic side of the game. We then have a Junior Elite Academy. Again, this is progression of age and the progression that the young men and women in our group want to take and be involved in. Again, all through positive reinforcement, through coaching and teaching and life skills and lessons. We are directly involved with the Cedar Grove Recreation Department, so we actually run that department in hand in hand with the, with the rec team. We are responsible for the coaching and the training and setting and organizing the games and what have you with, with the town. Right on through to our Elite Girls Academy, Boys Academy, right up into the high school. And a new exciting venture for us that we're starting this year, which we'll talk a little bit about, is our Women's Semi-Professional Team that's going to be playing right here in town. So it's an exciting event, which we'll talk a little bit about. One of the things that we do is, as I said earlier, is not just through athletics and not just through predominantly our soccer program, but our sports program. We provide unique experiences to our men and women or to our boys and girls in the club, one of which, as you can see up here on the slide, is a special tournament that happens annually in Barcelona, Spain, the Mundialito. And it's based around soccer, but it's an exchange of different cultures and ideas. Over 5,000 participants, 300 countries. We're sending eight of our young men this year over to the tournament. We've done this now since inception. Last year, we had about five people, five of our guys that went over, and the feedback has been tremendous and the experience, they bring it back, they talk with our own club and exchange the culture and ideas that they've been exposed to. So it doesn't just stay with those same few individuals, it transcends throughout the club. So it's one of the unique experiences that we like to bring, and it ties in with our core value and our mission statement of broadening the horizons, making good young men and women and all of those things that we've discussed earlier. One of the other items that we have supported since inception is our own Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Walk that happens in town. So we've supported that fully, we will continue to support that, and we look for other opportunities in which we can do that, but that's one that's near and dear to our heart. So we've, we've been part of that team and that great organization in trying to raise funds for such a wonderful cause. One of the other things that we've done is also, that we started this year and will continue to do, is reaching out on an international level. So our young men and women were asked to reach into their pockets and their families, make donations from equipment, from cleats to balls to shirts to what have you. We gathered all of that, and it went over to newly formed teams in the Philippines. These teams that have nothing, barely even a ball to play with, where now there's a whole other generation of kids that are starting to be able to enjoy this game and wonderful experience and directly from our own men and women in the club that went out of their way to, to raise those donations and get that. We did that in the November-December timeframe, and it just went over last week, week before, was shipped over directly to the teams. So we're waiting to hear some of that feedback, but we have no doubt that they're going to be as excited as what we take for granted every day of lacing on a new pair of cleats or having that new ball. These, these kids over there don't have that, and we feel the importance to reach out and again, teach those skills of giving back to those that don't have what we do have. One of the things I'd like to touch base on, and Tommy's going to hand out as a little bit of a news article that we have, is some of the club growth. The new initiative that we have is with the WPSL. That's the Women's Semi-Pro Team that we're started. The WPSL is recognized as the world's largest sports league. It is a women's only league. I don't know how familiar you guys are with that, but most of the players on our current women's national team, the highest level that the women can aspire to be in this game, most of them have played through this WPSL league. Where, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So this is a league that's the biggest league in the world, 119 teams in our country, and it's bigger than a women's major soccer league. I went to Las Vegas back in January, we have an annual AGM meeting, when everybody showed up, all the presidents, coaches. The room was full of wonderful people, and one thing in our mind and my mind was women's right in soccer, in general speaking. So I've been involved in the soccer world since I came over in 1999, and really, we focusing on the boys and the men's side heavily, but on the women's side and the girls' side, we're just a little bit lacking. So as a World Cup is coming up this year, as you know, in France in June, and our women's is going to be part of it, and as I can see, we have three wonderful ladies here in the board as well. So hopefully, that's going to open up a door for more women's in town, out of town, to support us, come out and play for us. Right now, we had one triads already, and the next one is coming up this weekend. We have, we have players coming over from Italy, we have a couple of players from Spain as well, so it's going to be, look like an international. We're looking for, of course, I reached out to the high school coach, right away when I, when we purchased this expansion, I sat down with him, and I taught him right away, if somebody wants to go to college or even just playing in high school, we welcome them to come and play for us and join us. And I believe this is, this is something that everybody should follow. Everybody to Cedar Grove. We didn't take it to Montclair, they wanted us to go to Montclair, especially the town wanted us to use Montclair name, but because I live in Cedar Grove, I brought it here. And I believe we can develop that with you and with the town, and so this program, and our younger ladies who's over there playing for us and going to high school in two years are going to get the most out of it, of this league and this program.
I think it's important that, that we stress the fact that we are a Cedar Grove organization, and we are based, we live in this community, we raise our children in this community because we love this town. So as, as the women's game strives for equal recognition, because they don't get the same level of response, there's a whole thing out there with level of pay. We're not here to deal with all of that, but from an equal recognition, a way to promote the sport in another fashion is what is important to us, and to bring it into the town of Cedar Grove was a no-brainer for us. And right now, we will be playing at the high school, thank you. We do thank you for that opportunity. We think it's tremendous and amazing. We want to be able to promote it much more than we have to date. Now we want to lay some of the framework. You stole a little bit of my thunder, you mentioned the Jackals game. We actually are going to be playing before the Red Bulls on June 1st at Red Bull Arena, and we would like the permission to promote that openly with, with your support throughout the community, through the schools and what have you, and turn it into a Cedar Grove Day if you would, and promote it as such. We feel it's important from all facets, not only for the young ladies, but also for these young men to see these Division 1 college players and ex-players and aspiring to be players, because they'll learn from it as well. So it touches on all aspects of what we promote and what we aspire or try to instill in these, these young men and women, as you see in front of you. But I think it's important that, that we stress that, yeah, Montclair wanted us, but we don't want Montclair, we're Cedar Grove, and we want to be part of this community and grow in this community and grow this game in these young men and women with the ideas that we cherish so much and want to pass on. I can say honestly from the coaches and Tommy and myself, it's a real passion for us, both passing on what the game has given to us, as well as what the life experiences that bring with that. So I just, I just wanted to make sure that we, we got that point across while talking about, that's some of the importance that we find with this club growth and the women's game coming to us at such a high level as well, and not just a nationally recognized level, but an internationally recognized level, even though it's a quote-unquote semi-pro league. There are players coming from all over the world to try and want to be in this league because it is what it says it is. It's the largest league, highest level that you can get outside of the professional league, great exposure, and quite honestly, a lot of fun. So with that being said, we wanted to talk a little bit and see how we can further our partnership that exists right now with the Board of Ed. And as we said earlier, much like our own beliefs and our own mission statement, you know, the Board of Ed, as we understand it, tries to work within the community to, to promote our youth, to give them all the opportunities they can to excel in all facets of life. And the two organizations outside of, and those common goals, I think, go hand in hand, and I think we would, we make a great fit together, and I think we can continue to do so. Some of the things that we would like for the Board to consider and achieve from this meeting, to be recognized as a Cedar Grove organization, as a town group. We are already involved, as I said earlier, running the rec program hand in hand with Marissa Landolfi, who's the Director of Recreation, so we deal with her on a day-to-day basis directly. We're active in the community, we're looking for other ways to, to grow within the community outside of just the simple fundraisers, great causes. We try to strive and give back. We are 70-some-on percent Cedar Grove membership. There are some outside towns that do come to the club and have heard about us, and we've gained some traction, but our core, our foundation, where we want to be and how we want to grow is within Cedar Grove. One of the other things, yep, is with the women's team that we have coming, Kate Hanlon, who's the trainer for the high school, she jumped right on board. We went, as Coach Tommy said, as Tommy said, that we talked with the high school coach. She heard about this, she wanted an opportunity, we want to give her that exposure, we think it's fantastic. The more people we can get involved within our community, the happier we would be. So we think it's a step in the right direction. So one of the things that we mentioned earlier is recognition as a Cedar Grove organization, and we think this is the key to this whole meeting today and why we're presenting ourselves to you and talking to you. We'd like to have the opportunity to disseminate more information in the schools, to get our message out there, to let the students who don't know about us yet know who we are. I know the Friday folder is a method that's used, and that possibly could be one way with, again, through the board, not through anything outside of what we would do, but working with the board to get that message across.
Just one thing here, Rob might not know about, but through the recreational department, Marissa, we, and when we have some programs together.
Yeah.
She's able to advertise it, so it's great, good to see that people, people know about us, but if something comes, comes out that not run along with our recreational department, likely able to still, able to advertise to the, to the board.
Yeah, if I may, one of the things that we didn't talk about, which is sort of a community give back as well, is we had an end-of-the-season party. In the past, it was the quote-unquote Wizards Party. This year, with all the work we did and how much the rec program has also grown, we brought the rec kids in as well, and the feedback was overwhelming, the positive result of that. So it is growing, it is out there, we're getting more of that, that feeling and that community response. So that's another thing that also goes hand in hand with the rec department. One of the things that we'd like to, is we are a not-for-profit organization, so we rely on the charity of others and reaching into our own pockets and our own time and donation of all of this. We would like for the Board to consider a moderate change in our tier status. Currently, we rent the fields that, that are provided. The hard one for us, which is, which really cripples the budget, is the lights, using the lights on the field. We don't have a problem with having to give back our fair share, as, as people may say or see it, but the one thing that really is, is difficult for us from a budgetary standpoint in giving to all eight programs that we have is renting of the lights. And we would really appreciate if the Board consider looking into a change in the status at least as far as the light rental goes. We don't have any problem paying for the field and use of the field and the upkeep and the maintenance that goes with it, but the real budget breaker, if you would, is that renting of the lights. And as you know, the fields, and we understand that, you know, the, the schools should take precedent always, many of the times the fields are not available till after 7 o'clock, till when you would need the lights. So that's, that's why we bring that one up for the Board's consideration. One of the other things we'd like to do is see that we can get a priority over non-Cedar Grove organizations for use of the field. Without too much of the details, currently, we know that there are other, outside of Cedar Grove organizations that rent the fields, and by all means, they should be entitled to, but we would like to just have a consideration or a priority to give back to the town and make the fields in the town used for the town first before they go out to consideration to non-Cedar Grove groups. We'd like the opportunity to, if the Board is okay with it, that we know there's some open space, for example, on North End, right out here, there's that open space of the field. We would develop the field, we would line the field, we would get into figuring out what would be involved, to level it, raise it, make a safe playing surface. The only thing we would ask is that the Board of Ed cuts the grass like they normally would, no different, but we would maintain the field in the sense of keeping the lines, keeping the safety and all of those things as a place for practice and training and games and what have you. We would like, if possible, to be able to get, as I jumped ahead on the slide here, but as you consider the lights issue, if it's at all possible to be able to utilize, and we would rent for the field fee, the high school field two times a week, and possibly the middle school one time a week for training sessions. Gets a little tight if we go less than that when we have as many players that we have currently. We want to be able to have a safe space for the kids to grow and learn and develop and keep things moving and flowing and give the most that we can to, to our organization. So those are a few of the things that we would really ask that the Board take under The timing of our spring season is essentially as soon as the weather breaks. Most likely be that first week of April, so we know we're coming with you, we didn't give you a whole lot of time, but time is of the essence for us here, and we really hope that the Board could take what we're asking and learn a little bit about what we are, and hopefully you got a little bit of that feel. As I said, we really relish the partnership we have now, we want to further that partnership with the Board. In summation, our organization shares a lot of the core values that the Board does, and it's all about these young men and women here. We don't do it for any other reason but for them, and just to give back to what the game has given to us up here, we want to give back to them as much as we possibly can. So I want to thank all of you for your time, your attention. We sincerely appreciate that. We hope we're here to stay, we are part of this community, we are getting closer and becoming a tighter-knit part of the community and the fabric of it. So again, thank you all for your time, we appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and any decisions that come. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
I didn't ask for a knife.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
I would like to speak.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Aren't you glad I asked?
You're killing your son over here.
That was classic.
I just wanted to let you know.
He can leave.
The wife is okay, the sun's going down.
This is on TV. So Anthony M. Palmieri, 69 Ozone Avenue, Cedar Grove. I think Mr. Featherman would certainly agree, and I know you would agree, because this is also about your two sons. We have some very talented young soccer players in this town right now, and I think, you know, the positive thing about that is if you look at a lot of our kids now, playing on the varsity.
He can leave.
The wife is okay, the son's going down.
This is on TV. So Anthony M. Parmary, 69 Ozone Avenue, Cedar Grove. I think Mr. Featherman would certainly agree, and I know you would agree, because this is also about your two sons. We, we have some very talented young soccer players in this town right now. And I think, you know, the, the positive thing about that is if you look at a lot of kid, our kids now, playing on the varsity, they've, they're playing for STA, they're playing for Verona United, they're playing for Clifton Stallions, didn't have the opportunity to play for the Wizards, you know, a, a town-based team. So maybe that would have been different if they had had that opportunity. You look in the high school, that one banner that's lacking is a soccer banner, I believe, correct? So I think that would be a, a wonderful thing that, you know, we, we have the players now to do it, we, we, we have a great coach. So I think, you know, moving forward, that everybody here is from Cedar Grove. And this is the Cedar Grove Board of Education. The bottom line is, let's develop these players in town, they're gonna play for the high school hopefully, and it's only gonna make us better. If you look at our varsity season this year, we lost in the county game in penalty kicks, we lost the state game in penalty kicks, we lost, I think, five games by one goal. So this, this program, and I know you agree with this, Mr. Featherman, it's getting close to taking off, it's very close. And we're moving down in the division, I believe, this, this year. There's an opportunity to, to really bring soccer into this town and truly, you know, make it as important as football. I know a lot of people disagree with that, but we have the players, we have, we have the coach, we have, we have the talent to do that. And by developing all these guys that live in Cedar Grove, it's only gonna benefit Coach Knopkin, it's only gonna benefit the high school going forward. And at the, the end of the day...
But is it gonna benefit the girls? You're talking about...
Oh, yeah, I'm talking about the boys.
What about the girls?
No, the girls.
I see some beautiful girls over there.
The girls, absolutely, the girls, I, I'm talking about everybody involved with the Wizards going forward. And, you know, all of our programs are gonna be successful in the future, and that's really what we want to have happen here. And I think, you know, it's all about, the training with the Wizards is great, the coaching is fantastic, the, the way the families get along is fantastic, playing great competition is really important, and that's another part of it. You know, Tommy yells a little bit once in a while, but that's okay, we're working on that, that's all right, we've accepted that. But it's part, it's, we, it's like a family atmosphere, and that's, and that's really important. And if you see a lot of our varsity teams, wh, when they're coming out of a huddle, whether it's basketball, they say "family," and that's important. So let, let's make it a family atmosphere, let's grow together as a family, and let's just improve all our high school teams. And that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't so bad, was it?
His mom's gonna get up now.
I actually, I have a question. So you said that you, you run the, the Cedar Grove rec, rec program. So help me understand the difference between what the Wizards, what you do for the Wizards, and then what you do for the rec program for soccer.
So the rec soccer is only in the fall season, usually, used to be. Right now, we, we push it out a little bit, we did it in the winter right now, once a week, and we're gonna do it in the spring, once a week.
So do you only do, I'm sorry to interrupt, but do you only do boys soccer then for the rec program?
No, no.
Because the girls have soccer in spring.
Unfortunately, yes, unfortunately, back in the fall, it was, everybody was boys. Because a couple of girls signed up and we just, they didn't feel comfortable to play with the boys, and we didn't, we did not have enough girls to put the team together. And the winter time, it's funny, we got about eight girls sign up, and so it's growing. And the springtime right now coming, we try to do a, a once a week, just to continuously to have that recreational program. People already, thirty people sign up already for a spring program that begins in April. So we, honestly, we pushing the girls as well, it's not, we don't want a girls to have, that's why we bought a WPSL team here. But unfortunately, it's many other sports out there, and we, at reserves, we don't want to compete with any of them. If somebody wants to play soccer, they can come in and play soccer with us. Even, I had the, some of the girls who played with the boys, because they capable to do that on EDP level, which is a higher level. But on the girls' side, on the recreation side, we just don't have that number yet.
So there wasn't a girls' rec, there weren't girls' rec soccer teams this fall?
In the fall, no.
There weren't any, for any age group?
Any, no. Right now in the winter, we doing the winter clinics, we, we, we got eight girls signed up. But some of them came playing for Cedar Grove Soccer Club or just came in as a recreational player, and that's what I wanted to mention, the other thing, and I forgot here, Joe Romar, Romaro here, as well as Katia Corbo from Cedar Grove Soccer Club. And really, we working together, we not working against each others, like I heard in town, like we stealing players from Cedar Grove Soccer Club, we don't steal anybody. It's a free world, if somebody wants to join us, especially from Cedar Grove, we take them before anybody else. And again, I want to thank them too for coming tonight, I want to thank them, their support, and, and they, they child playing for us too. So it's not like we want to really separate organizations in town that you might heard before. No, we're not here for that, we're here to bring people together in town and through soccer.
One of, one of the things that I think is important to note too is that we are year-round. So we play in the fall, we have the indoor sessions through the schools, we play in the spring, and we play in the summer. We actually offer, we have a couple of free trainings in the summer, we're having a few beach tournaments that we're going to, that brings the families together. So, and again, I can't stress enough that it's not all boys. In fact, one of my main responsibilities is coaching our U-11 girls, which, those are my girls right over there, you sorry, U-12 now, they're getting older, they're growing up, I'm not. So the, the U-12 girls, so, and it's, it's a fabric of the club. So to the extent that we can get young women to come out and play, by all means, we welcome them. You asked a little bit of the difference, one of the two differences is, there's a different level of commitment by the athlete themselves at the Wizards level. So the training is the same, we don't hold back on training the rec kids. It might be once a week, where our Wizards players are committed to two times a week plus games. The level of competition strictly from an athletics standpoint, from a soccer standpoint, is a higher level of play, right, than it is at a rec level. But we still, we try to instill the same values, core values that I talked about earlier across all spectrums of the, of the level. So I don't know if you saw it on your slides, you have different levels of player development and the, the different levels, different ages, different abilities. So the rec level is just a different athletic level, but it's not a different level to what we do as a organization.
So if I sign up my child at rec for soccer, is, it'll automatically, it's a Wizard team? That's what I'm confused about.
It's not a Wizards, it's not a Wizards, they, they don't come to us, we have our annual tryouts. But if you sign up for recreational, you sign up for recreational soccer, which is once a week, it might be twice a week, it depends on the season.
But you guys are running it?
But we volunteer, so that's, again, everybody's volunteer, we don't get paid for it. So everybody has their own job here, teachers, own business.
So we volunteer to...
I work for other academy to make my living. So again, this is a volunteer base, this is course, and recreational as well, we don't take any money. Although in the winter time, we do charge, and that comes through the reserves and the spring, but the fall, everything goes to the recreational.
So I take your answer to you, so it's the same groups of us from the coaching staff doing the trainings and practice and coaching on the games. So from that aspect, yes. Administratively, it's still the rec group and the rec program, so the badge they would wear would not be a Wizards badge per se, it would be Cedar Grove rec.
Right.
But they're having the same coaching that it would be if it was once a week, not two or three times a week, and what have you, and a different level of competition, but the same training.
And when you say Cedar Grove rec, you mean the travel teams also?
Do we have any?
So the younger kids are, well, no, like the younger kids, you know, are more rec-based, whether it's in town or like which is Verona, whereas, you know, the older kids, they go and they compete against various different towns, so that's why I'm trying to understand. Like the U-14 and U-13, and they go everywhere and compete against different towns.
So the recreation is two level, yes, we got recreational level and we got the travel.
Right.
Right.
So the, when we do recreational for Cedar Grove, recreational soccer program, that's rec level.
Right.
We do, they do play against Auburn, they do play against Millburn, they do play against, but that's a recreational level.
Right, that's what I'm trying to understand, the difference, right.
But in the fall, only in the fall.
Right.
Right.
Winter and the spring is only training for that.
For the rec, for the rec.
Wizards, we all year round, training and leagues.
Right, I guess I'm trying to understand what your role is with any, with the older kids on the soccer teams, the kids who are in like the middle school who do travel in the fall and in the spring to, and play in different towns. Do you guys do anything associated with that?
Not...
Non-Wizards?
No, not because of Cedar Grove, but because the recreational, the soccer program is only in the fall, it's not in the spring.
Right, I'm not referring to Cedar Grove rec, I'm referring to the older kids who play.
So that's a travel group, that's part of Cedar Grove soccer.
Yes, exactly.
Right, so that's, while we are working together and we partnered up, the training is done by Cedar Grove volunteers, and they're, you guys are with Red Bull?
Red Bull.
That's what I was trying to understand.
Right, okay.
So from a travel perspective, it's not...
They are different, yeah, they are a different organization.
Got it.
Wizards work with the sports club, they are a liberal soccer club.
So there's no competition then amongst the Wizards and the, and the travel, in terms of trying to get players or anything like that?
We don't, we don't pitch it that way, I mean...
We feel it that way.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
You just have to go to the mic, sorry.
Yeah, you gotta go up.
You gotta go to the mic, yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
So all the people watching at home can hear you.
It's not for us.
We see you.
It's definitely not for us.
For the masses of people at home.
Sorry. And you just have to say your name and your address.
Uh, yes, Fred Sisparrow, 35, High Point, in Cedar Grove.
Now you're good.
Just real quick, myself, my son, he kind of did the gamut, I think I can kind of help explain the different stages. So I helped coach rec like five years ago in Cedar Grove with Joe, a couple of the guys, and it's for fun, that's all it is, you're learning the basics, it's for fun, and then like any other kid in a sport, as you get a little bit older, you want more competition. So then they have, where you go and play other towns, Roseland, you know, close by. It's good, it's basic training, it's once a week, it will never get to the level that this town wants it to. So my son, we left and went to Verona, like, what, a half a dozen other kids and your friends, went to different towns, because...
That's what we did.
Yeah, because the program wasn't here.
Right.
So for two years in Verona, we traveled, we played all, it was great, but all my son's friends are here in Cedar Grove. So last year, we started training with the Wizards, great training, great staff. My son went to Barcelona last year, we went to Lake George, Ocean City, higher competition. It's where it's gonna get your middle school, your high school, it's gonna get it where you want it to be. And we pay for it, there's no doubt we pay for it. And I think if you want the competitive level, this is where you're gonna get it. A guy in town, a guy that's committed to soccer, because he is way committed to soccer, and the kids love him, he does a great job, and I just think you have to understand, it costs a lot of money, and we are a Cedar Grove group. So yes, there's kids from out of town. I played soccer as a kid in Nutley, we had kids from Newark, we had kids from Montclair. There's just not a big population in Cedar Grove. So to have all these rec teams and a highly competitive in-town team, it's not that easy. So you get a kid from here, you get a kid from there. And again, it's not like we're subsidizing, the town's not subsidizing them, they pay their way. It's just, we need help with the fields, we need help with other things, but it's a good group, and I'm happy I'm back in town. You know, it's nice when I pick up my son at school and he's running around with his friends, you know, instead of, okay, get in the car, we're off to Verona. And there's kids playing in Verona, Montclair, all over the place, you name it. If you want to get them back into town, this is a way to get them started when they're young and keep them here. So just something to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to stress, right, that Cedar Grove Club does a very good job too, we're not in competition with them. It is, if you could think of it in this way, it's three different levels. You have the rec level, you've got Cedar Grove level, which is competitive, and we're just that notch above where we, we go to a higher level of competition. They do a tremendous job, a tremendous job, but we're just at a different level from a competition standpoint. And that's why our affiliation with them right now has been so successful, because we all recognize there's a place for all of us, and we do want to work together and are willing to work together. And that's, I think, representative of why, you know, you have members of their board here, their own kids playing in the club as well, they're looking for that higher level. And that's what we sort of bring to the table, I don't know if that puts into perspective some of what you asked before.
No, absolutely, I appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, anyone? Anybody else wishing to speak? Are you sure? All right.
He's running in, I mean...
I closed that part of the meeting. Are you sure I could open it back up?
You could open it.
You can open it so easily.
She's got the power to gavel, you know. She does have the power to gavel.
Alrighty, announcement of future meetings, we're actually gonna go a couple of weeks before we see each other.
No.
March 19th, same place, same time, and then April, if anybody can believe, April, that's kind of crazy. So anyway, there's no further comment on anything? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pervilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, the meeting is over, are we adjourning back into exec?
Yes, it's in for two minutes.
All right, the meeting is over, we go back into exec. Happy meeting, everyone.